I'd like to call to order the September 27th, 2022 meeting of the Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education. And we will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Mary, can you do the roll call, please?
Sure can. Lewis?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Zymet?
Here.
Granland?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Severson? Superintendent Stenbik?
Here.
Great, thanks, Mary. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next, we will move on to the approval of the agenda, adjustments and announcements and correspondence. Starting with the approval of agenda, can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
And second by Molly. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Next, we have our announcements. On October 11th, Tuesday at 5:00, the School Board Subcommittee on Policy will meet here in the Community Room. Also, on October 11th, Tuesday at 5:45, the School Board Subcommittee on Community Engagement will have a community engagement session over Zoom. On October 11th, Tuesday at 6:30, is the 10-year teacher reception here in the Family Center. October 11th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, it's a busy day. We will have a regular school board meeting here in the Community Room. On October 18th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, will be the School Board Work Session here in the Community Room. On October 20th and 21st, there is no school. October 25th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting here in the Community Room. And October 31st, which is a Monday, there will be no school. Superintendent Stenbik, is there any correspondence?
Madam Vice Chair, there's no correspondence at this time.
Thank you very much. Next, we will move to the communication to the Board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The School Board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request the administration to follow up. The Board will not take any action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. There is no one here in the room with us, other than us and Dawn, so I'm assuming nobody's going to speak. Next, we will move on to the consent agenda, which includes the Personnel Report from September 27th, 2022. I get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Mary?
Second.
And second by Brenna. Any discussion? I forgot that last time.
Nope. Super excited that we have a district-wide nurse.
Yes.
Very exciting.
Cool, thank you. All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Next, we have the acknowledgement of contributions. And I have to make this bigger on my screen. This is a resolution, so I will first read the resolution and then ask for a motion in a second. Acknowledgement of Contributions Resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and may apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the Board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore being resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District Number 13, that the School Board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $1,125.25. Donation of burgers and brats was made to the Columbia Heights Public Schools by Bill Streff for the all-staff picnic with an estimated value of $980.25. Donation of school supplies was made to Valley View by Jonas Jarrah Cornell for student needs, estimated value of $25. Donation of school supplies was made to Valley View Elementary School by Betty Thomas for student needs, estimated value of $70. Donation of school supplies was made to Valley View Elementary by Falden American Legion Post 555 for students' needs, estimated value of $50. Total fiscal year of 2022-2023 monetary contributions to date is $29,204.25. I get a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura? Second? Second by Brenna. Any discussion? Laura?
I'll go ahead. We are always so grateful for all the donations that are made and in this particular case, welcoming the staff back and then, you know, student needs for supplies and things like that. It's always so very much appreciated. We thank you.
Agreed, thanks, Laura. Anyone else? All right, since this is a resolution, Mary, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Absolutely. Lewis?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Zymet?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
And motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to discussion reports and information items, and we will start with reports from members of the Board. And let's start with Laura.
I don't have a lot to report. I did attend the work session last week and I had conversations with some community members and had the chance to speak to a couple of, you know, state representatives and officials and stuff, talking about the needs of our schools and maybe different ways that we can work together and, you know, the challenges that we're undergoing and I got some pretty good reception, I think. Maybe we can see something move this year, so, well, we'll see. You know, everybody's trying hard and we're just going to keep at it.
Thank you. Perfect. Molly?
Thanks. I also attended the work session last week and had conversations with Superintendent Stenbik, parents, student staff. I did have a conversation with Lions member Nick Nowitzki about a possible collaboration with one of our student support programs, so I'll be following up with Superintendent Stenbik about that. And then I did have an opportunity to help out at the Back-to-School BBQ that was sponsored by Black Men Teach. We had a few of our teachers there and their students were all invited, so that was a great opportunity to just be out in the community with some of our teachers and kiddos. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Brenna?
I also attended the work session. I had conversations with Member Palmer, Member Granland, Mr. Burkus at the middle school, and also Superintendent Zina, or Stenbik, sorry, and several community members throughout the week.
Thanks, Brenna. Mary?
Thank you. So per usual, lots of conversations with families and community members regarding the lumps and bumps of starting a school year. Lots of positive things. You know, people are just really excited to sort of be here and start to work out those kinks again. I did not unfortunately attend the work session last week because I was ill, but I was able to have some phone conversations with Members Zymet and Superintendent Stenbik. We had some email conversations. But it was just a pretty low-key couple of weeks, so.
Thanks, Mary. And for me, I attended a chair meeting last week prior to the work session and the work session and the chair meeting this evening and had also conversations with several of our community members and parents and Superintendent Stenbik as well. Superintendent Stenbik, do you have a report for us?
I do have a brief report. Director Hennigens and I met with our transportation company to discuss some scenarios for improving timing and then also planning for the start of our encore after-school programming, which starts next week. Very exciting. I also met with the Columbia Heights Chief of Police, the district security staff, and the high school administration. And I just want to reiterate that we are planning a safe and fun homecoming week, which is October 10 through 14. And then, as mentioned previously, I had conversations with Chair Severson, Chair Mueller, Member Lewis, and Member Zymet. Thank you for your-- did I say Member Granland? And Member Granland, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the curriculum cycle, presented by Director Tuckrell and Coordinator Gardner.
Good evening, Vice Chair Mueller, Members of the Board, Superintendent Stenbik. I'm here with Coordinator Gardner to share an update of our proposed curriculum cycle for the years 2023 to 2033. So a 10-year curriculum cycle that we're proposing to the Board. Now, I can't believe 2033 is coming out of my mouth.
A little bit of shock in the room.
Our mission at Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And tonight, really focusing in on the core values of excellence, collaboration, and innovation as we review curriculum. This presentation, as well as our core values in Columbia Heights, are aligned with the School Board Equity Statement. And tonight, we are here as an informational item, and we will be returning October 11th, seeking approval of the updated curriculum cycle. The curriculum review process is part of our Columbia Heights Strategic Plan, as well as part of the Minnesota Statute 121B.11. And there are many reasons that updates need to happen to curriculum cycles, but one of the biggest ones that came about is the Curriculum Review Cycle by the Department of Education. The Department of Education has a 10-year review cycle, and due to the pandemic, it changed quite a bit. So previously, years were off by three or four from what they are right now in front of us. And so in order to ensure that we're following their curriculum cycle and standards that are coming out and that we're able to implement in the year required, we needed to make some adjustments to our curriculum cycle. In addition, the Department of Education had a 10-year curriculum cycle, and in the past, our curriculum cycle went between seven and 10, depending on what you've looked at, and really, we want to try to align with what they have in front of us. So it looks really small on the screen. It's in an attachment, and our hope is, once it's approved, that we can publish this on the website as well to share it with everybody. But it is a 10-year cycle, in which we go through 10 different years of a process. And so beginning in the year one of really looking at that preparation and looking at data and figuring out the needs that are there, and then moving into years two and three and four, where we're looking at, are there resources that need to be purchased to align better to the standards or support our students? Are there changes to our scope and sequence? Are there changes to our courses that need to be made? Not every time.
She froze. Director Tuckrell froze on us.
I think what she was going to say is that not every time is going to require purchasing a whole new curriculum, so maybe making adjustments. You froze there for a second. I know, I noticed. I was like, oh, I might freeze again. I keep saying it's unstable. Sorry about that. Good thing Emily, she can jump in with the same words. The other piece of it is that the curriculum review cycle really is a process by which we go. So looking at this and seeking approval tonight would be approving the process of going through this 10-year cycle, and we would still follow our School Board approved process for adopting curriculum. So core curriculum is still going through a process, which Coordinator Gardner will share more about in a little bit, in which we bring it to our community, as well as bringing it to the School Board for approval prior to adopting a new curriculum. So the cycle tonight is really looking at the process in which we go through. So with that, I'm going to pass it to Coordinator Gardner to share a little more about the assumptions with the curriculum cycle.
All right, and good evening, Vice Chair Mueller, Superintendent Stenbik, Members of the Board. So again, as we work through the curriculum cycle, we have some assumptions that we work within. I'm not going to read all of these, but I do want to highlight a few of them. So one is that new courses always go through a School Board procedure to be added. So if we're adding a new course, that's going through a pretty extensive process before it's offered to students. Special education gifted and EL learners' needs are reviewed within the schedule for every content area, so that's always something that we're looking at. Social, emotional learning curriculum and resources will be reviewed on an annual basis. College and career readiness and technology integration are, of course, key components whenever we're doing curriculum. The MDE standards, as we've seen, may change at a schedule other than what we have developed in Columbia Heights, so it may mean that we make some adjustments to the plan as needed so that we are in compliance with MDE expectations. And then curricular resources will respect, honor, and support learning from all cultures represented in Columbia Heights Public Schools. I wonder if Tara froze again, so. There we go. All right, curriculum mapping is a process that happens on an ongoing basis. So our teachers are curriculum mapping through their PLC teams. Of course, making sure that we're aligned to state standards, but also making sure that we're aligned so that equitable curriculum is happening across the district. So whether you have a fourth grader at Highland, Valley View, or North Park, that they're going to be experiencing and receiving the same standards-based instruction. And then we're also looking at that vertical alignment, so from early childhood all the way through senior year of high school, ensuring that we are supporting our students on their path to graduation. And again, as I said, continuously updating to support student learnings. This is an ongoing process. So curriculum development goes through a fairly extensive process that involves multiple stakeholders, so starts with just talking to teachers, looking at data, seeing what needs they are expressing and seeing with their students, and then gathering recommendations from teachers. From there, curriculum development goes to leadership teams, principals, teaching and learning. It'll go on to a broader administrative team, to our World's Best Workforce Leadership Team, to the superintendent, and then ultimately to all of you on the School Board. Looking back at some curricular highlights from the 2021-22 school year, we really focused on enhancing our literacy instructional framework in all content areas, continued prioritization and alignment of standards through our PLC work, new STEM programming at North Park School for Innovation, the Project Lead the Way implementation that now goes all the way from North Park to Columbia Academy to Columbia Heights High School, continued support for new science standards, and our Introduction to Education course, which is featured in the photo on this slide. And looking ahead to this school year, we are really focused again on that literacy instructional framework, with an additional focus on small group and individual instruction, continuing our focus of professional learning communities, engaging in data cycles around standards to support instruction and learning, and then a development of aligned, multi-tiered systems of support or MTSS processes to ensure that we are meeting all students' needs. So we will be returning October 11th to seek approval of the updated curriculum cycle for 2023 to 2033. With that, we are ready for any questions you may have.
Great, thank you both. Questions? Laura?
I did notice that in there that we do have a line for equity with respecting and valuing cultures and so on. But I was wondering if there's any other, if we're able to look at the curriculum also through more of an equity lens as well, and if there's any steps that are being made in the process? I mean, it's really a big ask that we're asking right now, so I'm just wondering how it's going. Did you follow that?
Yes, if my internet works. I'm blaming it on the cold outside, by the way. Looking at our curriculum and really analyzing to ensure our students see themselves as well as learn about each other has been an ongoing process in Columbia Heights. We started with a lot of professional development, focusing on different cultures, different areas, different people, including American Indian, which is listed in the Minnesota standards. And as we go through the process, we do it again. So we review, we look at things. We also ensure that if we're noticing that more is needed, that a core curriculum is not covering all the different pieces, we supplement. So many times, you'll see a lot of new books coming into classroom, and we're adding that into our instruction to support students seeing more cultures and more of each other in the books that they're reading. So it's an ongoing process, and we'll continue to deepen and go into it more as we go through the cycles each year.
Thank you.
Thanks for your question. Other questions? Brenna?
As you're looking in that equity lens, I'm hearing like cultures and backgrounds and I'm just wondering if there's also like focus on LGBT and different like religious groups. We have a large Muslim population, things like that. Is all of that encompassing, or is a lot of our stuff way more like race or like country of origin-driven?
That's a great question. Yes, it is everything. We really are, I think, when we first started, it probably started more on race or more on culture, and now we've really expanded. And we've really ensured that we're looking at sexual orientation, that we're looking at religion, backgrounds, different pieces, so students have access to that as well. An example of that is this past summer and the summer before, we started looking at our pre-K curriculum and analyzed the resources within there and ensured that students are seeing that. They have a whole unit on family. Well, family looks a lot different when we talk about it, and how do we ensure that students understand that and see that? So yes, that has been part of the process as well. Thank you for the question.
And Tara touched on this, but I would say some of our best advocates for that are our teachers. So with that pre-K team that was looking at curriculum, they were coming to us with books that they wanted to purchase that went along with the standards and the themes that they were teaching, but truly, our teachers are some of the best advocates for that.
Thank you both. Any other questions? I have, do you want to ask your question and I can ask mine?
I've already gone once, but I'll wait.
Okay, so just my question with doing a curriculum cycle based on 10 years, as we all kind of recoiled when you said 2020, or 2033, how do you adapt if standards change for different components within that 10-year cycle? Does that throw you off, or how do you accommodate that?
That's happened a lot in the last few years, but we've been able to support it. We really look at our budget when we're looking at our budget at the beginning of the year to ensure that we have that area as a focus, but also money to support supplementing curriculum as needed. And so we've been able to do that. We also look at data. If our data is showing in those 10 years that this is not working, we want to ensure that we're addressing it right away. So we have a cycle to remind ourselves to go through and do it, but when there's an urgency in it, we do support that, too.
So kind of a follow-up question, if it's the year to review the science curriculum, but the state comes in and changes the math standards, are you circling back to math, even though math would be like in three years in that introductory part of that process?
That's a great question. The state will start a process, but they also take many years. So theirs has to go through legislation, it has to go through different stakeholders. So when they start the process, we usually have at least seven to 10 years to get to that implementation. And we have to be ready before the MCAs are ready. So the required implementation year is a year in which the new MCA will be released. So we take that and we work our way backwards, and we work with our teachers. And there were some areas in science, when it came out, that they were way far ahead. They didn't need many changes, but then the state standards changed between sixth and eighth grade, and we had to make the major flip. So we started that one earlier. So when we look at it, we try to work our way backwards from when that implementation requirement is to ensure we're aligned with that.
Great, thank you. Laura?
Actually, a slightly different question, but I got the answer I was looking for, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Brenna?
Yep. So in the process of, or the graph that you showed, I didn't see like parents at all in any of those spaces. And I'm just wanting to know like if that's intentional. I mean, I think it's great that we're having our educators choose educational material. I think that's really important. And I'm just wondering if there is a standard for how we allow community involvement and how perhaps we protect the the equity and representation that you guys are working so hard on.
I think there's a couple ways that we try to do it. The World's Best Workforce includes community members, but we try to open it up. So when we were looking at the new math curriculum for elementary, we opened it up to add additional people who are interested in the community to looking at the math curriculum. Math didn't seem to be a huge excitement to jump into, but we got a few community members who really wanted to look at it and see what it was. We also pilot the materials. So before we bring it to the Board and we want to implement it and adopt it, we pilot it in the classroom so that the teachers are able to share with families, get feedback from them, look at data from it before we say, yes, this is the way we want to go. So we try both at the building level and the district level to try to include voice from families and community members.
Good question. Anything else? All right, well, thank you for your presentation, and we'll see you back here on the 11th.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You, too.
All right, we'll move on to our action items. The first item is the insurance renewal, so welcome Director Hennigens.
Thank you, Vice Chair Mueller, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Stenbik. This evening, I have before you for action the property and liability insurance renewal. This was covered at the previous School Board meeting in depth. This is a renewal for October 1, 2022, so a few days down the road here through October 23rd, or October 2023. The insurance renewal coverage, again, is our property and liability insurance, so the liability side of things would include things like our cyber liability insurance. And our two main providers for this insurance are Liberty Mutual and Travelers Insurance. The total package for this renewal is $285,966. This is about a 25% increase from last year, which was gone through in detail at the previous meeting, and is really on par for what we're seeing across the insurance industry. Any questions?
Thank you, Director Hennigens. Any questions? Laura?
Just a clarification. In addition to that, we're actually insuring all of our property at what it would actually. We were a little underinsured, and we've been working that up for the past couple of years. So we are fully insured now, you know, should the 49th, 49th Avenue tornado ever come through, you know, so that's good to know. And the fact that we were actually able to renew our cyber policy is also great. Some districts are having a lot of trouble with that, so thank you for your hard work on this. I know it was really hard getting this package together. 25% increase is painful, but it would be worse to be without the insurance.
Well said, Laura. Thank you. Other questions? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote, and I get a motion to approve the insurance renewal.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Go Molly on that one, the second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Thanks, Director Hennigens. But stick around, because you're up next for the P2023 preliminary levy.
Thank you, Vice Chair Mueller, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Stenbik. Before you for action tonight, I have the preliminary levy for P23. This is the levy, P23 levy is fiscal year '24, and the action item before you is to approve the preliminary levy as maximum, as discussed at the previous School Board meeting where I went through the levy in detail, and which I think, I believe you have in front of you as well. We have a slight decrease in our levy for the P23 levy, currently sitting at a 4.27% decrease to the community in this levy, in this P23 levy. When I presented it as an info item, it was a negative 4.67%, so you can see there's been some adjustments since. This was presented a week ago at the Board, and there'll continue to be more adjustments as we work through the fall here. And as those adjustments happen, again, approving the maximum ensures that we capture those adjustments. And that's an annual process for really all school districts across the state. So again, this evening before you, I'm asking for action item to approve the maximum for our preliminary levy for P23.
Thank you, Director Hennigens. Can I get a motion to approve the preliminary pay 2023 levy as maximum?
Moved.
Brenna? Second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion?
Yep, Mary. Just for clarification, Director Hennigens, you said the percent change is minus, so it's negative 4.27% at this moment. So, correct me if I'm wrong, does that mean that there's actually going to be a decrease for homeowners in the Columbia Heights School District?
That is correct for the school district portion. That's always an important thing to make sure we clarify that we are only a small portion of the tax to the community. And for our portion right now in the preliminary levy that we're looking at, it's a negative-- or decrease of 4.27%.
Awesome. Thank you so much for clarifying.
Thank you. Any other questions? Laura?
Just a comment, too. Now, as far as-- and I know we went over this in detail, but I guess for the purposes of the public, this is all-- the levy is all like fixed numbers. We don't have any control over what's available. Is that correct?
Yeah, for the most-- I mean, there's-- we have like our operating levy. Is it within this? So there's many components within this levy. And of course, that's photo approved. And but really, it's, you know, the areas that we'll adjust, unless there's a-- there's areas that will adjust, and mainly those areas will adjust based on actuals and student enrollment. So right now, for example, I'm predicting in this levy what our enrollment will be in fiscal year '24. And they're applying their formulas to that, and that's what our levy is based off of. And if my numbers are really great, it'll be really close to this number. If my numbers are off a little bit, it'll adjust. And they'll make adjustments two years back. So as things change, as final numbers come in from ours through reporting, those are some of the biggest areas where we'll see adjustments, and those adjustments can be positive or negative. Certain areas with levy dollars, again, we're guessing. We're guessing what dollars we're levying within school age care. And if our expenses are lower in school age care for some reason, we're going to see an adjustment in the future, and that's going to change that number. So really, it's-- you know, there's a few factors that will cause change. But yes, you're right, they're really fixed numbers. It comes from a 40-page state report that we pull the numbers into this workbook and summarize it for the board to make sure that it's somewhat understandable from a levy-- or from a budgeting perspective on where the money comes from for our levy. So it's-- we're condensing 40 pages into one page.
Follow-up, too. And this year, they actually got numbers earlier than they usually do? If I remember correctly, which was great news?
Yes. Last year, they were late, and in the preliminary levy, there was some major errors in some of the formulas. So our numbers were off quite a bit. And so our levy changed quite a bit through the months leading up to levy certification. This year, things look a lot better. They got out earlier, so things are looking pretty stable right now from the levy. And I would venture a guess that we don't see too much of a difference to adjustment once we get to that final levy certification in December.
Thank you. That actually is really good news. Approving a levy before we have more solid information always made me feel uncomfortable. But by law, we're required to do it by a certain date. So anyway, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? I'll make one point, just as I think Laura mentioned, that we discussed this at length during our work sessions. So we appreciate all the detailed information, Director Hennigan's. All right. With no other questions, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. And we have the three P with Director Hennigan's today, and we will move on to the bids for the Valley View HVAC.
Thank you, Chair Severson-- sorry, Chair Mueller, members of the boards, Superintendent Stenbik, Vice Chair Mueller. So the last item that apparently I've forgotten how to talk on the last item is for the Valley View HVAC call-for-bid authorization. And I just want to stress that this is just an approval to go out for bid. This has been approving the project as of yet. It's for HVAC replacement at Valley View Elementary in the gym and cafeteria area. We are in the midst of finishing up our HVAC installation from last year-- last summer's project at the high school and Columbia Academy for the gym and cafeterias in those two buildings. And this is a continuation. So as you can remember, we had-- as the pandemic was in, we went forward and worked with an engineering firm on developing a plan, looking at our HVAC throughout the district and what are our critical areas, and moving forward and creating a phased approach for re-updating-- updating our HVAC across the district. And looking at our indoor air quality needs at our common spaces was our first approach at replacing some of these systems. And this is a continuation of that, and this would be for the summer of 2023. Things are moving pretty quickly, or much more quickly as far as being able to get supplies and stuff. So, you know, we feel like we're on schedule if we can get this bid authorization out and hopefully see some favorable bids for the summer of 2023. So seeking approval to post for advertisement for bid.
Great. Thank you. I will ask for a motion to approve the authorization to publish a legal notice for bids for the replacement of the HVAC systems that support Valley View Elementary School's gym and cafeteria. And motion--
No moved.
Molly? In a second? A second by Brenna. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. Is that the last project for the schools? Valley View was the last one, or do we still have Highland?
No, we still have more. This is just another step in that direction. And I, you know, I stressed that, you know, we are-- the existing units do provide appropriate air exchange. So indoor air quality, we do work with a company to do indoor air quality testing. But standards are increasing, and these are original units. And we want to make sure that we can replace these air handler units and, you know, really address things for the future.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. With no other questions, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you, Director Hennigan's. We will move on to board topics. Does anybody have any board topics this evening? Mary?
I do. I think the main one for me is just to let people know that there's-- the teachers' union, Local 710, is sponsoring a forum for Columbia Heights School District School Board candidates, which is really exciting. And I understand it'll be here in this room from 5:30 to 7:00 tomorrow night, Wednesday. So hopefully, people will be able to be here. I know that they are also going to be zooming it, but I don't know if they're taking questions online or not.
There'll be a live stream.
There'll be a live stream, yeah. Okay. So if you've got questions, you know, come tomorrow night. And super excited to see our candidates.
Thank you. Any other board topics? All right. With that, then, thank you all for your time today. I will adjourn the meeting at 7:38.